Okay, I'd like to call to order the Town of Frazier's regular board meeting for May 19th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. Can I please have a roll call?
Andy Miller.
Eileen Waldo.
Arnold Quinn.
Katie Soals.
Philip Vanderneil. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please? A motion to approve the agenda.
I so move.
Oh, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes the minutes from May 5th, 2021?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Great, we are now at the town manager interviews portion of our meeting. We are still down two trustees, so if we can give I don't know, let's give it a couple, two minutes and see if they they show up, so sorry.
Completely understandable.
Yeah, maybe can somebody does make up their
Yeah, we got it.
What? Oh, you're texting, okay.
How was your day?
It was wonderful, thank you. I took a drive and just beautiful, every area. It only gets better as you drive.
This morning was really spectacular.
Yeah, yes it was. And and the sleep that was coming down was very interesting and wonderful at the same time.
Dramatic.
Alright, you pulled it off.
It was exciting. I was like, it's raining? No, wait, it's not, it's sleeting.
Or is it snowing?
Or is it snowing? Yeah, I wasn't sure at first, though.
Alright, good job Katie.
Okay, Katie.
Alright.
Katie with the D has shown up.
And here's Brian.
And Brian is both here now, just for the record. We we have Brian and Katie, we are already open and recording, so. Okay, thanks everybody for coming tonight. This afternoon, I guess, early. And our first candidate is Erin Hearn. And we're going to ask you some some questions, and there might be some follow-up questions.
Sure.
As we go along. And here we go, the first question is general open questions, 10 minutes. Can you please provide a brief summary of your education and work experience, identifying how these would inform your role as town manager?
Sure. I received my Masters of Public Administration from the University of Wisconsin-Moarki. I then went to the Village of Brown Deer and worked as the Assistant Village Manager there for about four and a half years. During that time, I got to see a lot of things, including development building study, as well as a new public works facility, a $10 million public works facility be built. So a lot of great opportunities, a lot of grants that came in for different other community public open space areas. So it was a very exciting position that I felt there. And then after that, I went to the city of Mineral Point, which is a community of about 2,400 people. So it's a small community, an artsy community, but also a community with with conflict. So it was a community where half the population came from Chicago and half the community was artists who were originally from there, and and then there were the farmers. So we had a lot of conflicting interests, and so we had to do a lot of things to collaborate those interests and find some common ground. So those are, that's my educational background, as well as my my work experience.
Perfect, thank you. Why this position in Frazier right now for you, and how are you good fit for this role? What do you bring that others might not?
Sure. So you know, I have the small-town community experience. I I loved the small-town experience and getting to know everybody, the stakeholders, the residents, the the council in general, or in this regards to the board. I have had a lot of similar experience working on big projects considering, or to do with wastewater treatment facilities. So I had a lot of experience with that in the city of Mineral Point and not being given notices and not meeting DNR regulations. So I've been through all of that and what needs to come out of that. Not every situation is the same, granted, so, but I I do hear that you have similar issues here. So it would be a great project that I think would be wonderful to take on. I've, like I said, I've been part of building studies. I understand part of the job description had to do with expanding the recycling facility, as well as potentially figuring out a new situation for the public works department. So that interests me, especially because I've had experience within the past. But I think you have a great group here. I have always wanted to come to Colorado. I love the mountains. This is beautiful beyond belief. My family is originally from Alaska, so I grew up with with mountains and and water and and hiking and and all of that fun stuff. So you know, this really reminds me a lot of Ketchikan, Alaska, where my family's from. And so I would be honored to be able to serve this community.
Can you describe your management and leadership style with specific focus on the town manager's role in working with staff, the community, and the town board?
Sure. I I feel that I am always, my door is always open. I am always able to listen to concerns from residents, as well as from staff. I always think a good communication process is necessary. My leadership style is more making sure that staff feels empowered to do their job and has the adequate resources in order to do such. So making sure that they are well-prepared and well, and understand what is expected from the board, as well as what's expected from me. That's one thing that I think a lot of leadership does not focus on, is making sure that expectations are fully discussed and understood by both parties. And so I think that's one thing. So understanding communication and empowerment are definitely the main focuses of leadership.
Okay, thank you. What is your experience with ideas for facilitating cooperative efforts with neighboring jurisdictions and with voters? Can you please describe your experience interacting with neighboring communities? Is your style to work collaboratively with them, or to compete with them?
Oh, no, collaborative work, of course. So when I was the Assistant Village Manager in the Village of Brown Deer, there were seven communities that had meetings regularly and worked together. We actually, I led a study to see if we could combine our municipal court efforts. We all had every seven, or each of the seven communities had separate municipal courts. And I was like, you know, trying to come up with a way that we could combine them. And so in the end, after I did a lot of work with each community figuring out, because each system was set up different, each used different programs. So I learned the ways of each of the system, each of the seven systems, as well as other understanding of combined court systems in the area, to see if we can make ours work to any of those standards. And so it and it ended up that we could do it cost-saving, cost-savings-wise, but one of the largest communities did not want to, so we didn't end up going through with it. But it was a very educational process, you know, it was wonderful working with all seven communities. But we continued to do that. So even after that, all the assistants in the different communities and the managers got together regularly to discuss ways that they could collaborate their efforts. And I find that very beneficial. In Mineral Point, it was unfortunate, I was the only administrator in the county. So collaborating efforts was was very hard. And I I tried to get my, or have my court, or I'm sorry, my city clerk to talk to other municipalities in the area. But it was hard because they didn't have very long hours, they weren't very well-paid, and so they didn't want to take the extra step to collaborate efforts on that account, so.
Can you tell us your experience in providing oversight of wastewater treatment plant, joint-use facility, and/or special districts for the same?
Sure. So wastewater treatment plant, so we, when I first started, I had, with the city of Mineral Point, I had never seen a wastewater treatment plant before. So with the Village of Brown Deer, we actually had ours through MMSD, which is the Milwaukee Sewage District. And so I had never been privy to that. But as I started with the city of Mineral Point, I learned a lot in a very short time. So we had a lot of notices from the DNR that started appearing. We had a very seniored employee who was on his way out the door and and showed so in his work efforts. And so, and we needed to hire somebody, and hiring somebody in a small community, I know, is very difficult. Especially finding that talent in specific fields. So we had, you know, we had a lot going on in that year and a half to try to understand what, there was, there was no capital improvement project plan, so we had to create a capital improvement project plan, put something together. Maintenance had not been done in 20 years, so we were suffering from a lot of things that we had to then put things together and figure out what we were going to do next. So it was a really eye-opening experience, and I'm glad I was part of it. But but it was, it was a lot of work to put things together, to to get it on track. But now that department, I'm I'm glad to say we were able to do, make some financial changes, which made it so that we could do two of the main projects that we had to do for DNR requirements, as well as update our sewer, some of our sewer pipes that were in really bad repair, as well as set aside some money, have money available for maintenance. We freed up about $200,000 for for maintenance, annual maintenance. So so that's what I left it with, and so I was really glad that that, we were able to do that.
The town heavily relies on sales tax income. Do you have experience developing a diverse revenue stream, and how would you engage the public?
Sure. Um, so I don't have experience creating a diverse revenue stream. We, in the state of Wisconsin, we have, we rely mostly on property tax. So it's a very different way of looking at things. But in that approach, I think you do have a more diverse you, the the budget is made, the budget revenue is made up of a more diverse group than in Wisconsin. So so just looking at that, I mean, that is wonderful. But I understand, you're talking about economic diversity? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Are you talking about, okay. But I understand, you know, I, going around the town and seeing what was available, I met with quite a few residents and asked that question, you know, what do you think this city needs? And I think that's where this needs to start, is asking the community, what do you think the city need, or the town needs that we don't already have? And that will help us diversify our resources.
What is your assessment of the critical issues facing the town, and what are the opportunities?
Sure. So I I have seen that there's a lot of development going on, and that there's a lot of conflict associated with development processes that are going on. So understanding that more and trying to bring everybody to the table and see how we can smooth over the process. So a lot of it is just communication and and getting ideas out there and understanding requirements and and, you know, you can't make everybody happy, but you hope to, you know, make a majority of your population happy. So if the population is is for, I mean, the board represents the population, so I I don't know the specifics on all your projects going on. I know about the wastewater treatment plant one, and I've heard a little bit about your your development, some of your development projects. So, and and then I understand that there are different groups, like the Arts Council and and the Performing Arts Building and things like that. But it's just getting to, getting on the same page, understanding those projects, and talking with the council individually to understand where we should go forward.
What role should the manager have with the community? What issues are you aware of from your research of Frazier? And what would your approach, given what you know?
Sure. So a manager's role is to be there for the public. If the public needs to talk to you, has a concern, doesn't understand something, your role is to be there to answer those questions. So, you know, I but in regards to the research that I've done, so I've I've talked to both Diane and Sheena from the county to get a little more understanding about our available resources for affordable housing. I understand that's one of the main concerns in this community. I actually spoke with a gentleman earlier today at lunch at your, at your bar and got some some great feedback on, you know, how people really need to need more affordable housing and and how it's it's not good when you're packing a bunch of individuals in one small unit. So, you know, we really need to respect our workforce, and we really need to have those options out there. But you're right, I mean, it is not, we are not the property owners at this time, so it is not our it's not fully our role to do that, but it is our role to provide, pave the way for things like that to become possible. And if that's just providing information, I noticed on our website, we don't have a lot of the information about what state grants and availability is out there. I think they have it on the county website, but I don't believe we have it on our website. So for instance, the loan program and and the business tax credits that are available. Just having that information available and at at people's fingertips when they visit our website is very important to have, because it shows that we, you know, want to bring people into our community.
Did you have something, Karen? I thought she said something. Okay, sorry. Oh, that's okay. Sorry. Okay. What is your experience making through assessment of an organization, staff, and board, and then leading through necessary changes?
Sure. Um, so when I first arrived with the city of Mineral Point, I had to do a lot of things. So I was their first city administrator. So they had been around since the early 1800s with no city administrator. And so there were a lot of things that I had to update and change. They did not have an employee handbook. They had a very old process of keeping records of their times, and it was not very universal. It was very there were many different ways that they went about doing it. They didn't really have comp time was really whatever they said it was. There was really no mechanism of tracking that. So there was, there were a lot of things upfront that I had to do in that situation. And so when creating the employee handbook, I had to assess what employees already thought they were getting and what they were getting in reality. If they had signed contracts, if they didn't have signed contracts. So I had to put all of that together and evaluate how we were going to put this together without making individuals feel that we were taking away some things that they already thought they were getting, but also protecting the city so that they weren't paying out too much. One of the things that we had was we had a payout program for sick time. So we ended up eliminating that, however, keeping it for the older employees. So there were a lot of processes that I had to roll out through the organization, as well as get the council on board with how we did these processes in the past and why we should change them in the future. And I had to give them the information of how other communities were doing things. And that times were changing, and we really needed to update some of our, some of our information. I created the first parental leave policy that we had in place. Unfortunately, I didn't get paid parental leave, but at least, at least we had a parental leave policy in place now, which we didn't have before. So, so that was just, that was just a few, but one thing that I can say is an organizational assessment and rollout.
Okay, can you talk about your experience in major land use or development negotiations? And then what has been your role in that process, and would it be similar in Frazier?
Sure.
And I can repeat anytime if you.
Sure. Um, so for land use, I have, in in the Village of Brown Deer, we had a planner. So the planner did a majority of that. However, I stood by his side as he went through that and helped him with any processes he needed. But he was the the major cadet in that. However, when it came to negotiations, it was the manager and myself who would would fill in there. So you know, I got to be part of a lot of the big conversations about how we were going to go about doing it. They had to give us, you know, the finances beforehand, so that we were making sure that it was they were financially able to do it and not requiring too much finance from the, from the village. In both situations, so in the city of Mineral Point, they did not have a TIP district. But in the Village of Brown Deer, they had three TIP districts. So I got to work alongside the the Community Development Director while we went through that process. And it created a lot. It created wonderful apartments, a new library. And they're now doing a big community bandshell and community space in the middle of the city, so. So I was there for the initial process, and now it's continuing, and it's great to hear the updates of how it's progressing. But then with the city of Mineral Point, I put together an RFP. We owned a parcel of land, and so I put an RFP together. And we only got one applicant, but that applicant was a $9 million affordable housing project. Unfortunately, it never went through because it was on a it was part of the historic district. And so there was a lot of community commotion. And thankfully, you know, once that community commotion happened, it then required us to take a step back and discuss it more at a different level and see what the community really wanted. So this had been done in the past, but not to the extent that the community needed. And I think this action really made the community know that we were serious about doing something with this property. And so once they knew we were serious, we started getting a lot of great ideas from the community about what we could do to improve that parcel.
Do you have experience and ideas to help enhance disaster preparedness and build resiliency in our community in the face of an uncertain future? What is your experience with trails, parks, and open space development?
Sure. So I I've taken emergency preparedness classes. I've never had to participate in any emergency. We did have issues in Mineral Point with erosion. And so I I was not able to be there long enough to complete an erosion plan. However, I did take care of one erosion issue that we had with a historic parcel. And so I was able to help them figure out how to purchase a land kind of angular to them, which made water flow right onto their property. And so now with that purchase, they're able to create a retention pond, so that they're able to lessen that flow, so that their property is in, can stay in better condition. It had, it had buildings on it from the 1800s. So it was in dire need of some assistance. And so in doing that, it created a community governmental and nonprofit partnership to do that work, so that was great.
And then the second part is that
Sorry.
your experience with trails, parks, and open space development?
So yes, so trails. When I was in the Village of Brown Deer, I, we had a trail that was in real, real disrepair. And so I worked with our engineer on staff. He was also the public works director. But him and I worked together to try to make sure that our projects aligned, because he had a project a few years down the road to, there was a there was a lot of, there was a stream that ran by there, but it was filled with concrete. And so the idea was to naturalize that and then to create a path that was ADA accessible. So we both were able to get grants on that and then combine our projects, and that was completed and and also just won some recognition in in being done. So I wasn't there for the final completion of it, but I was there for the initial concept, the the funding and the the project behind it, so.
And have you been a manager, in a manager role before in a mountain community or in an area with limited access to resources and employee pool? What did you learn about how this role and how, what did you learn about how this role? And how would you propose addressing staff development and retention?
Sure. Um, so I, not in a mountain community, however, the community I last served was so the closest cities were about an hour away from it. And so it did affect the ability to get a good pool of candidates when we were hiring. So I had, I had to go through that with two hires. We we had two retirees that long, longstanding employees. So they had been there for over 40 years. And so filling their role was very interesting. We actually had to change kind of how their roles looked and what their positions were responsible in order to fill one of them, just because it was such a unique role. It was called Park Director, but it was a lot of things. It was pool management. It was, I mean, he did his own mowing of the big parks. And so we had to, and he also did the park and rec stuff. So we we had to kind of rethink how we wanted that position. But but yes, I I completely understand, you know, it's just not like you put an ad in the paper and and you get 100 candidates. We had that with Brown Deer. It was really easy to find candidates. But then in Mineral Point, it was, it was difficult, and it was challenging. And I actually had to reach out to different departments, to people I knew who worked in those fields, to figure out better ways of finding candidates.
Frazier has benefited from the stability of pre, of previous manager being in that role for a number of years. What do you think is the right amount of time for a manager in a place to be most effective? How do you see this position fitting into your career plans and progression?
Sure. Um, you know, my goal is to be in the next position for the long haul. So I would really like to permanent my family somewhere. However, I understand that, you know, each job is I I do not want to overstay my welcome. So if I find that I am not benefiting I, I do not want to overstay my welcome, so if I find that I am not benefiting the community, I would step down. Because, you know, it, I don't, I am not one to stay in a community uh, just because it's easy. But, but I, I do, you know, if I was to get this opportunity, I would move my family here and we would stay here. Because that's, we would like some stability.
Thank you. One of the biggest challenges in Frazier and many mountain communities is the cost of living, especially housing. What experience do you have with affordable housing and/or workforce housing initiative? And what, and what would you propose for Frazier that it might want to consider, sorry?
Sure, no, that's okay. So I know there's a bunch of grants out there, um, working with the development company who was going to bring affordable hous- housing into Mineral Point. I learned a lot of things about how they apply, you know, what communities um, are available for these grants. And actually rural communities are more available than anybody for the USDA grants, um, as well as other federal uh, tax incentives. So um, I would definitely uh, look into those more, talk to, to developers. Many developers understand these, these grants pretty well, so. But that's why I also talked to Sheena, because I wanted to see from a county stance, how supportive they are of their local municipalities um, on that level and trying to get people in here for affordable housing. But uh, that's where I would start. I understand it's necessary from looking at the housing options that are, are available here, but um, but it's not impossible. So I hear that there's some development of possible affordable housing. So uh, hopefully, we can get some of that, you know, I don't know the background, so I say that, please know that I say that in the, you know, very uh, top knowledge field because I just don't know the situation. But um, but I heard there might be some opportunity for affordable housing in the near future.
Okay. When would you be able to start?
So my family and I could be here um, at the end of Wes's time, so you know, uh, the end of June would be fine. You know, we would start as soon as we knew, um, if I was hired or not, we would, you know, my husband and I would take a trip here and, and check out things, talk to individuals who knew about possible uh, short-term rentals for the time being, until we have, found a house, um, that was our, our forever home, so.
Okay. And then in closing, the town has um, contacted your references and conducted a background check. Is there anything you'd like to make the board aware of?
Yes, I would. So um, back in, at the end of twenty nineteen, uh, I received a DUI. And in, in relation to this DUI as well, um, I also was cited, was cited for resisting an officer. Now, once this went to, uh, before the judge, the judge reviewed everything and came to the determination that this was not something that I should be charged with. So she determined that um, uh, it should be at, on a deferred prosecution agreement that would be then dismiss the charge as of uh, Janu- the beginning of January. However, I just talked to my attorney a few weeks ago and him and the DA had a conversation and they're willing to reduce that to the end of July. So as of, like, the end of July, July thirty-first or July thirtieth, um, they will be dismissing that charge. So. And I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions.
So are both charges or the?
No, just, just the resisting officer.
Okay, gotcha.
And just so you know, just so you all know, this is not, um, I, I feel that this mistake is not a reflection of my character. I am a very hardworking individual and I don't feel, uh, this is a first-time offense, you know? Nothing like this has ever happened to me before. So I, you know, it was a very out-of-place situation. So I just, I just want you guys all to know that it's, it's not my personality.
Okay, and then any follow-up questions from the board?
Yeah, I think you can be assured that we'll have more sunshine here than Ketchikan, so.
That'll be nice, yeah, oh gosh, I remember those summers, my gosh, it was like.
I spent four, I spent four summers in Juneau and up on the Juneau Icefield, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, thirty days without the sun and, and you get a day and it comes out for about three hours and then back it goes again.
I was just in Juneau and January visiting, because my sister lives there with her family. So we went and visited her and, oh my gosh, it was so sad. It was, it was like so cold and just, but you know what, they know how to work with it. I mean, they had little suits for our kids to, you know, so they wouldn't get wet on the playground equipment and I, they, they had it covered. They knew what they were doing.
And then also you mentioned um, a little bit about your willingness to step down if you felt like you're the, you know, you weren't performing, you weren't serving the town. And could you tell us just a little bit about Mineral Point seemed like it was a pretty good fit, but it just lasted a couple of years, I mean.
Yeah, you know, so.
Looks like to a bigger town, so.
Yeah, so I, I was doing a lot of good work there, however, I don't know that the council was aware of what the role of my position was and, and um, or what they really wanted out of it. So they knew they wanted the role, they fought for it, you know, it was a unanimous agreement to hire me. But then uh, it felt like some of the more louder uh, council members um, didn't, they didn't see the change that they wanted. And so I think in the end, you know, it was, I, I think they want somebody more who will just do their bidding. And I was doing many things internally that maybe weren't front-facing, but were things that needed to get done.
You said you were the first manager there, it was, how was the town run before that?
It was just run by a clerk and a deputy clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, and then all the individual silos. And that's the one thing that I brought to the community, was I brought all those individual departments together and had them speak to each other, because it's not like they didn't work together before, but they wouldn't sit down and actually talk about what projects were going on and what they were doing and, and there wasn't that camaraderie, it was more like, uh, yeah, I'll be your friend, you know, and, and do this job for you, but it was less, you know, uh, they didn't appreciate it, each other as much or their own work. And so I think bringing them together like that was really beneficial.
Yeah, they didn't have a manager, so, not a natural thing to do, so.
Right, I know, well, and there were no, I started them on leadership classes because none of them had taken any leadership classes before. Many of them hadn't even gone to college or, or, or secondary school, so. It was, a lot of them didn't know how to do the budget. So that was another learning process that I had to bring them through, is how to formulate their own budget. How to be, you know, empower them on, this is your department, you know? You don't, you don't, you don't ask me what you need. You say, I need a new piece of equipment because of this, this, and this, and you give some reason behind it. And they just had never done things like that before. So they were more of a break-fix instead of progressive thinking. And where I am really, I pride myself on being a progressive thinker about thinking about the problems that we may run into, um, and, and trying to fix those ahead of time so that we don't end up running into those issues.
Where in Wisconsin is Mineral Point, is it up north or?
It's right in between, so you go an hour south and you hit Dubuque, Iowa. You go an hour north and you hit Madison, Wisconsin.
Okay.
So yeah, it was right in the middle, so.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Have you worked with a sustainability plan? With the thought of climate change and?
So I actually, you're talking about the one that the county put together, right? The impact study? No?
No.
Okay, because I read the impact study and they talked about climate change and, and how that's going to affect us in the future. Um, and I found that uh, really educational. A sustainability, uh, neither Brown Deer nor uh, Mineral Point had those, but um, if, I'm, I don't know. Does the town have one already done or has the town been thinking about doing one?
We have one.
Okay.
We need to process on it, progress on it.
Sure, yeah, so reading through that, understanding, you know, what expectations are out of that, um, and then just bringing the council together and understanding the priorities would be my first steps with that, so.
Do you know about water rights? I know when I moved from Wisconsin, I had no idea there was such a thing.
You mean how water is owned, uh, by, so I learned a little bit of that from Wes today. I don't know it fully, but I'm a quick, I'm a quick learner, so I'm, I'm sure that I can learn that pretty well, so.
Anybody else? Kate, do you have any questions for us?
Um, what is the number one thing that each of you are looking for in your next uh, town manager?
Transparency. I only got to say one, right?
Yeah.
Transparency.
That's a good one.
If we're going on core values, it'd be discipline for me.
Discipline to staff or to processes?
Being disciplined.
Being disciplined.
Following the rules, making sure people follow the rules, keep people in line. Not punishing them.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, probably picking back, piggybacking off of what Parnell said, I would probably say strength. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things that feel like discipline, I'll just leave it at discipline and strength.
Sure, sure. Well, you know, I, I just want to let you know that I'm not one who is afraid to speak my mind um, and to let people know uh, where I stand and where uh, their roles stand as well. I've, I've had some issues with that, um, not only being a woman, but having, being the first-time administrator in the city of Mineral Point. It was hard for people to understand who they were supposed to be accountable to. And so I made that clear, um, and I gained the respect of my employees and I made sure that they knew where to go and who to talk to when, when situations arose. Um, and with transparency, um, I, I am all for transparency. I, when I first started with Mineral Point, I couldn't even find the budget online. I had to ask the city clerk and she even had a hard time putting something together for me. So um, we went, uh, from there, we went to total transparency where every single document was on our website. And every, and, and we just got tons of appreciation from the community because not only was this through a time of COVID, uh, but it was also something they'd never seen. So I think they were a little overwhelmed actually, because they were like, we didn't, for, for years, they had no idea even what the city did or what the city was doing. And so it almost felt like it was always a closed-door approach. Um, and so we took it from that to being very transparent and having, you know, our meeting minutes, you know? Every, every meeting available, we had so much information, I mean, we had so much information about the wastewater treatment facility that they had never seen before, um, but that was readily available, you know? At City Hall, they just had never known that it was there. So uh, we, we made that, we made a fee schedule and we put that up there, nobody had ever seen that before. So it was, it was very eye-opening to a lot of the community. So I mean, I understand the need for transparency.
So Erin, mine's a little more lengthy, I've, I, I think we're faced with a booming community and um, everybody seems to have finally found the Frazier Valley. And I want to try and maintain the quality of life that I've known here for the last almost fifty years. So it's, it's difficult and that's the feedback I get from, from everybody is somehow can we grow, provide opportunities to everybody, but still somehow maintain this quality of life that we've enjoyed here for so long? So, so a town manager, I'm hoping, can help us navigate that path, so.
And there is a balance, but there, there is always a way to balance things out and make sure that, you know, because you, you're always going to have those people. The people who like things the way they are and the people who want change. And you just have to find a middle ground, but it is possible. Any other questions?
Can I add one?
Sure.
Trustworthy.
Yep, that's a good one. Uh, and I'll have to, you know, say on my, uh, on my issue that we discussed earlier, the next day after it had happened, I told the full council. So uh, just so you know, I, you know, I'm, I never try to hide anything about things that go on, so. I admit my mistakes when they happen.
Katie with a D?
Yeah, well, I was kind of right in the middle with the, the transparency and the, and the discipline with my, mine would be honesty. And that's just kind of right, right there in the middle. And I think you had a pretty good answer and you've been pretty honest and forthcoming so far.
That's how I act, I'm with, I'm like that with my kids and my husband, every day, even when they don't like it.
Great. Any other questions?
You don't, but I can tell you, I, you know, it's.
I don't know what the rules are.
You're, you're not, yeah. You're not supposed to, but I, I don't mind. Um, I have a four-year-old daughter and a nine-year-old son. And they both love skiing and snowboarding and uh, they are uh, very, so they gave me some parameters of places that I could apply to. So they said that it had to have a playground, it had to have horses, it had to have an ice skating rink. And, oh my gosh, what was my son's last one? I can't remember, but they, but they were hilarious, they were, I'm just like, oh, okay, well, I'll make sure to, to put, put those on my list, so. So their, their needs come before my own, so I uh, made sure that all of those were available. And so far, I, I haven't seen any, uh, anything that they would dislike. My son is also very into rocks, so I don't think he'll have a hard time finding one of those. Plenty of rocks. He comes home daily with like dozens of them.
What are your outdoor interests?
Uh, I love hiking and skiing, um, I love, I don't love gardening, but I don't think that'll be.
You can only grow lettuce and carrots, so that's no problem.
I can only grow tomatoes, I'm very good at growing tomatoes, but that's. That's okay, that's okay.
With the good southern exposure.
Yeah.
But I, I love bike riding, however, it might be post-challenging here, but that's, that's okay, that's no big deal. I can always find somewhere to bike ride. I love trains, uh, I would love to take the train to Denver sometime. I find that fascinating, that it goes all the way from Chicago to San Francisco. I think that's absolutely amazing. Um, and I think we can work on that as a community too, because I think that's a real drive. So um, I think that's, uh, I'm not sure how many people come, come in that way tourist-wise, but um, I, you know, I find trains fascinating, so. But outdoor activities, let's see. I like walking my dog sometimes, oh, and she's not pulling me.
Thanks, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you Erin.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
You all have a wonderful day and good luck with the next interview.
It's like asking what age.
No, 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 they're in a different county, yeah.
Wisconsin.
But they were near, but they were nearby. Manager for one, he's one of my best friends, though.
So everyone listening online, we'll take a break and the next one will be at five C M.
Well, no, they, that they
Hey, we are back and we're on to our second candidate.
Pleasure to be here.
And we're going to ask you the same questions that we asked, I'm going to ask all the candidates tonight. We follow up questions from the trustees. Process, so please provide a brief summary of your education and work experience identifying how these were.
Thank you. First of all, it's a pleasure to be here. I see we have 10 minutes max for that general question, so I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible. My education experience, I have a bachelor's degree in political science with a minor in pre-law. And a master's degree in public administration from Northern Illinois University, which is one of the top ranked programs in the country. My experience, I've worked in small towns, I've worked in larger towns, in Chicago suburbs, in Illinois, and also in Wellington, Colorado. My experience, most recently in Wellington, Colorado, has exposed me to land development. Of course, planning and land use codes, updates. Colorado water law, for example, is a good example as well. I remember when I interviewed for the job in Wellington, they asked me, what do you know about Western Water Law? And I said, nothing. Sorry about that. I'll be honest with you, but when I left there, I was the expert. So I believe that's going to help out my role in Frazier. First of all, I do have the education, I do have the experience, not only with the public sector, but also I have experience with the private sector as well. Of course, my military background as well gives me a lot of leadership and management experience and actual practice when doing that. So I believe I'd be a wonderful fit for Frazier.
Great. Why this position, Frazier, right now for you? And how are you a good fit for this role? What do you bring that others might not?
Okay. Of course, you know, last December, you were looking for an Entram town manager. And I did a little research on Frazier, and I was very attracted to Frazier. And actually, when I came and interviewed, I think I told you at the time that I would love to be your full-time manager. And I'm very honored to be in this process with the other two candidates to be considered for your town manager on a full-time basis. Frazier's a beautiful part of Colorado. I mean, I brought my wife with me for this interview process. She loves the area, the mountains around here. She looked at rendezvous, and she said, I want to live there. I said, well, let's wait a little bit first. I'm a good fit for this role because I have experience in small towns. I worked as the town administrator in Fulton, Illinois, a town of about 3,500 people. Very small staff, but very dedicated and very hardworking. We did not have a finance department, so I was the finance director. We didn't have a planning department, so I was the city planner. And when I was first hired, our police chief and our public works director were out on disability, so I had to fill those roles as well. So I do know what it takes to work in a small town. I enjoy getting involved with the community and becoming a part of that community. And I think the biggest thing that I bring to the table is I've had a commitment my entire professional career, not just in the public sector, but throughout my military experience, even the private sector of building communities. And that's one of the reasons why I chose to go to NIU and get my degree in public administration. I was on track to get my law degree, in fact. But a good friend of mine, a professor at University in Alabama, told me about public administration. And I felt like this is an opportunity for me to make an impact in people's lives where they lived. So that's always been my passion, and I hope to bring that same passion here to Frazier.
Can you describe your management and leadership style with specific focus on the town manager's role in working with staff, the community, and with the town board?
That's a great question. My management style is fairly straightforward. I practice a management by objective style. We know what our long-range vision is, we know what our goals are. We also know what the parameters are. You know, what's our budget, what's our timeline, what are those legal constraints? What about those constraints from outside agencies, CD, PHE, any type of agreements that we might have with Grand County or Winter Park? So my role as a manager is to make sure that we stay on track and we meet those goals within those parameters. But I'm also be looking for efficiencies along the way. Can we do things faster? Can we do things smarter? Can we save some money in the process? Now, how we get there is about leadership. And this is where I think my experience and my training with the military and my experience with being a leader for 30, 30 years or more. This is about how we get the job done. This is about how your staff, which I have to tell you, you've got an outstanding staff. You know, from my meeting with them and getting to know them, I would be really proud to work with them. But leadership is about how we get the job done. For me, it's not so much the endpoint, it's the journey as well. You know, how are we going to do this? I always have an eye toward excellence. I have an eye toward continual process improvement. I look for efficiencies. I encourage innovation. I encourage an entrepreneurial approach. I also, as far as the team goes, I look to ways that I can train and equip them so that they can contribute more. I like to empower my staff so that they have free rein to work within those parameters. I've been very successful with building effective teams. In Wellington, we put a priority on training for our personnel. All levels of training, every employee got basic training on customer service and team building. And my first-line supervisors will also receive training on effective supervisory techniques and leadership techniques. A lot of times you find that, you know, those first-line supervisors kind of found themselves in that position over time. But they may not have all the tools in their tool belt to be an effective supervisor. So by giving them those extra tools and encouraging them and empowering them to exercise those skills, we build effective teams doing so. Even our senior-level department heads and even myself, we took on more advanced leadership and management training as well. And we held bi-annual training meetings for entire staff, encouraged them to participate. And we saw that the morale was going up, performance was going up, we had less turnover. People were happy to come to work. They felt like they were making a difference.
What is your experience with ideas for facilitating cooperative efforts with neighboring jurisdictions and with voters? Please describe your experience interacting with neighboring communities. Is your style to work collaboratively with them or to compete with them?
I've always been a collaborative leader, working within the local community. My time in the Air Force, of course, you're in federal government, but you're always stationed in the local community. And I was always reaching out to the local community. I served on numerous advisory councils where we had to collaborate with the local community. In Canada, we even worked with the Prime Minister of Ontario to develop greater resources and availability for our troops there. In Wellington, we... Wellington was kind of unique, and this isn't detrimental to Wellington. But Wellington was kind of isolationist. They did not reach out to the neighboring communities. They didn't reach out and work with the Larrimer County. So when I came to Wellington, one of my goals was to make those connections, to build those relationships. And I'm very proud to say that we were able to work out some very deep issues. And Wes is aware of some of these because he was in Timnuth for a short while there. Worked out agreements, and we worked out the agreements in such a way that we all felt good about doing that. I think when I negotiate and when I work with other communities, it's about win-win. How can we work together toward a common goal? You know, I'm not going to be the type of person that's this way or nothing. So I'm always going to be trying to find those ways that both parties can live with and we can reach our objectives. I've done this in Fulton, Illinois. I did this in Lake Zurich, so I have just a tremendous amount of experience with working with other communities.
Great. Can you tell us your experience in providing oversight of a wastewater treatment plant, joint-use facility, and/or a special district for the same?
Well, both in Fulton, Illinois, and also in Wellington, Colorado, we had our own water and wastewater utilities, stormwater utilities and so forth. We never had a joint-use facility or a special district at that time. But I don't see any complication with working with those other districts. You have an intergovernmental agreement in place, that's already been negotiated. It's about building those relationships and working with them to find solutions. My experience in oversight of a wastewater treatment plant, most recently in Wellington, Colorado. When I was first hired, we had one wastewater operator. The rest of the staff had quit. And we only had one operator, and he had a D license, so he was entry-level. He'd only been on the job for a year. Our utility superintendent was not providing the support that they needed. Within six months, we had a new superintendent at our wastewater treatment plant, and we had two additional operators working there. We did the same thing at our water treatment plant as well. I believe firmly that staff is committed to doing that job, and they want to do a good job, but they need support. And the best thing that I can do as a manager is to give them the support that they need.
Thank you. The town heavily relies on sales tax income. Do you have experience developing a diverse revenue stream, and how would you engage the public?
That's another great question. You know, everyone this past year has been a little nervous about the impact of COVID. The fortunate thing is that Frazier has actually seen an increase in their sales tax revenue due to COVID. One of the things that I do think that needs to be looked at more deeply is that 1% sales tax that was approved in 2015. And that sales tax is really just barely supporting your transportation fund. But that sales tax was set up to establish not only your transportation, but also capital projects. So you're missing the boat on the capital projects. You have to find a way to diversify your revenue stream. One of the things we did in Wellington. Again, through working with our team and providing support and encouraging them to be innovative and entrepreneurial in their approach. Our finance department did an evaluation of how we invest our funds. I noticed that you have 32,000, I believe it is, in your general fund in interest income. We also had an interest income account, but we looked at how we were investing our funds. And we just made a subtle change. We got a board approval to make that change. And in our first year, we generated an extra $600,000 of revenue, just in interest. There are a lot of different ways that you can manage those funds and leverage those funds so that you can receive additional funds, again, through interest. Grant opportunities, how do you leverage your existing revenues, your reserves, so that you can get the funding you need through grants? Those offset your long-term cost. You have to deal with the grant administration, but that's minor compared to, let's say, a million dollars from the Colorado Water Fund to help you build a new plant at some point or another. I do believe that sometimes you do need to be, think outside of the box sometimes about your revenues. I notice that you're a statutory town, but you also have already a lodging tax in place. Your hotel across the street's got 62 rooms. They run at about 80% capacity. They charge a 5% sales tax from the town of Frazier. That generates a lot of revenue. I think there's other things you can look at without getting too deep into this, things like special districts, special improvement districts. I don't believe that you want to look at something that might involve a downtown development authority or one of these places where you can put in TIF, although that is still an option that could be considered as you're going forward. You need a robust revenue stream. I mean, I'll be honest with you, when I went through your budget, you're tight in places. You're short in your public works and street maintenance. You've got some projects on the books that's going to cost some money. Sustainability areas, things like your transit, your public works. You even mentioned that having a sustainable water source for the town. All of these things are going to cost money, and they're going to be, you'll have to debate carefully and consider numerous options to achieve those goals. And now, excuse me, and how would I engage the public? I've always believed that getting public engagement gives you better decisions. It's slower. It's what my old assistant used to call the sausage-making of making the sausage, you know, that part of government that gets a little sticky sometimes. You'll have residents that deeply oppose what you're trying to do, and then there'll be others that will be on board. It's about good communication, being out there, answering their questions, being honest and transparent. I mean, that's what governance is all about, so.
Thank you. What is your assessment of the critical issues facing the town, and what are the opportunities?
Well, I've already talked about a few of the critical issues, and I've made kind of a list. And this is what I've got through my research with the town, you know, examining your budget, looking at some of your plans and so forth. And this is in no particular order. I'm not going to rank them highest need to the lowest need. But this is just a kind of a blanket of what those needs are. You mentioned better records management and accounting. From my conversations with Russell and others, you need a more robust capital improvement plan, a five-year capital improvement plan. You need to look at your impact fees, which haven't been touched in several years. Affordable housing is an issue, and if affordable housing is an issue, perhaps the board might want to consider an affordable housing impact fee for this new development. You need a policy on development, you know, especially when it relates to affordable housing. What are you willing to do? What are you not willing to do? That way, you're not, you know, trying to make up your mind, you know, several times a month. And, you know, you know what your those parameters are, and you can work within those. Your public works facility needs an upgrade. You've outgrown that space. Your 1% sales tax distribution, again, you're kind of limited there with the cost of your transit and what that does. Let's get the wastewater plant finalized. Let's get all those problems with CD, PHE out of the way. Project N, Project P, let's resolve those so that we can keep producing. Joe's a great guy, and I think he's going to really be a part of those solutions there. You've got infiltration and inflow in your sewer system. Those can be resolved through things like sewer linings and so forth like that to help reduce that, which also reduces the amount of processing you need to do at the wastewater plant, which reduces the impact on your discharge permits as well. You need to look at sustainability for your, again, for your transit, for your public works, and also for those long-term water needs for the community. Did I catch her off?
Good job.
Thank you. What role should the manager have with the community? What issues are you aware of from your research of Frazier? What would be your approach, given what you know now?
I think there's different expectations from every community that I've been involved with about what that role of the manager is for the community. I mean, the manager, at the end of the day, is responsible for exercising your policies that you've set for and making sure that we meet those objectives. It's to manage the staff, to look for opportunities so that we can find some efficiencies and maybe leverage some of those efficiencies so that we can expand maybe our reach and maybe our services to the community. But I have been involved with the community in Fulton, Illinois. We did a community visioning process where we invited 60 members from the local community to get together. And we met for eight weeks every Wednesday night, and we talked about what do we like about Fulton. In fact, there's two questions we asked all the participants. I like Fulton because, and the next question was, I like Fulton but. And once you ask those two questions, you get a pretty good read for how the community feels about what the community is doing. And through that process, we created a vision for the town of Fulton, and that vision was named Fulton Forward. We focused on our strengths, and we tried to celebrate those strengths as their best of ability. We did the same thing in Wellington on a modified scale. Our Board of Trustees and I worked together to put together our first strategic plan, the first plan that they had ever, ever thought about. We identified what our two overriding priorities were. One was to improve our business community through economic development. The other was a focus on our infrastructure. And through that process, we were actually able to tailor our budget to what they call a modified, I forgot the name of that all of a sudden. If this is our priorities, you know, we're not going to be spending as much attention on these that are just off to the side. We're going to put most of our attention on what those priorities are and how those budget funds are allocated. As far as my research of the community of Frazier, you know, people are here because they want to. They love Frazier. They love the funkiness of this town and everything that goes along with it, the weather. You know, people choose to live here. I'm not sure that I am really aware of any issues that are, you know, in conflict. I do know that there's different agreements about maybe some of the growth that's going to occur, especially in your development and new homes and affordable housing. I believe that a greater emphasis might be placed on economic development for business growth, not just for the sales taxes revenues that they bring in, but also for the opportunities for employment for the local residents. What would be my approach, given what I know? I'm going to lean a lot on what the board, direction that the board wants to go. I would think that at some point, and I believe you have a strategic plan in the near future. Your strategic plan, if done correctly, is going to outline what that vision is, what is our mission statement, what are our values? You're going to help identify that, not just yourself, but you're going to have community engagement. And you're going to learn a lot more about what the community feels about the long-term vision for the town of Frazier. And then it's a matter of just, okay, let's make sure we hear what you have to say, that, you know, we may not all agree. You know, one side's going to say, we want to keep it the way it is. One side's going to say, we'd like to see bigger growth and bigger opportunities. You know, again, it's about finding that win-win situation and working with the community and being transparent and letting them know what you're thinking.
What is your experience making a thorough assessment of an organization, staff, and board, and then leading through necessary changes?
I believe I've always done an assessment of the strengths and weaknesses, threats and opportunities within every organization that I've been through. In fact, later I'm going to share with you a 30, 60-day, 90-plan where I lay out some of the steps that I will take to do that SWOT analysis. And that will help me get an idea real quick about what are those opportunities and what do we do well, what do we do not so well? And what are those threats to our community? I have done staff assessments with every organization that I've worked with, military, even the private sector. One of the assessments I did in Wellington was to, I had my senior staff take what's called a Clifton Strengths Assessment. I don't know if you're familiar with that. It's kind of a personality kind of management assessment. They rate your highest strengths along 36 different criteria. And I had my senior staff take all of that. And then we charted out the results, and we found out that we were very strongly oriented toward being strategic in our thought, but we're also very strongly in it toward executing those plans. And we were found a way that we can work on people's strengths, you know, it's not about, you know, improving your weaknesses. That's a personal decision. You want to, you want to see results, capitalize on what you know, what you do well. My approach would be to do the same thing here. The strength assessment is something that I would do with my staff, just like I always do. I need to evaluate them, understand where they come from, what they're thinking. And again, I'm very impressed with your staff. In fact, one of the questions I asked this morning in the staff review was, you know, what do you like about working here? What frustrates you? And every single one of the staff members said, we like the staff, you know, they enjoy working together. You know, that's just going to make my job so much easier, I'll be honest with you, that you've already got a great staff and a great professional staff. So my challenge might be to, okay, all right, how can we find ways to improve upon that? How can we find some efficiencies along the way? How can we get you, Russell, or get you, Beth, how can we get you to be more innovative in your approach? Think outside the box sometimes, if need be, and then encourage them to do so, and then be behind them when they do. So that would be my approach.
Can you talk about your experience in major land use or development negotiations? What has been your role in that process? Would it be similar in Frazier?
I don't know how involved your previous manager was in negotiations for land use or development negotiations. My experience, I'll begin in Fulton, Illinois. Fulton, like I said, was a town of about 3,500 people, had not seen any growth in a decade or more. In fact, in my three years of working at Fulton, we saw one new house built in all that time period. But on the commercial side, we worked with the developers to bring in affordable housing in a former Brownsville site. This was in an existing TIF district that only had about eight more years of life left on it. We were able to bring that development in without doing any kind of concessions, without any kind of incentives. They figured that the tax credits alone on that would be sufficient for their needs. And we brought in 40 units of affordable housing using Section 42 housing credits. Also negotiated another development for a roughly 10,000 square foot, I believe, commercial building. And it had a medicinal marijuana retail outlet in that as well. We were one of the first medicinal marijuana outlets in the state of Colorado. In fact, those were great negotiations. I always go into negotiations looking for a win-win. You know, how can we get you to come in and work with this? But all of my relationships with those developers in the past, even in Wellington, they've always been very professional, very amicable. And we both leave the table saying, okay, that's a good deal. My experience with working in Frazier, I'd be looking for that same kind of relationship. I do have experience working with a lot of development. We brought in 200-some-odd new homes in Wellington, 50,000 square foot retail establishment. And those, my negotiations in Wellington were not direct one-on-one because I had a professional planning staff. They led most of those discussions, but I have led those discussions in other areas as well.
Do you have experience and ideas to help enhance disaster preparedness and build resiliency in our community in the face of an uncertain future? What is your experience with trails, parks, and open space development?
My, of course, in the military, you deal with disaster preparedness all the time. Most of that is thermonuclear war, just, I don't think you're going to have that problem here in Frazier. I do have my certification on disaster preparedness. I've gone through the training for that. I was the co- commander of our crisis for the COVID when it first broke out. As far as building resiliency in the community, I've always believed in finding sustainable solutions to problems. Resiliency is a different story. Resiliency says that, you know, what if this occurs? And we lose that avenue, maybe a revenue or stream or something like that, how can we rebound and how can we recover? And having effective plans in place is going to be key to doing that. My experience with trails, parks, and open space development, we had a trail system in Wellington. We had a partial trail to the north part of town, a partial trail to the south. We had a trail system in Wellington. We had a partial trail to the north part of town, a partial trail to the south part of town. We worked with our consultant team to find several different, excuse me, several different alternatives, alternative paths. So that we can interconnect that trail. I'm sorry to say that that trail is still not complete yet. But it's an interesting process to go through the public comment period. And get people's opinion, especially those people that think that maybe they have to give up an easement on their, on their land. And those are difficult discussions, but again, I believe if you're transparent and honest and look for a win-win solution, those are pretty easy. And again, we've never had open space development, but when I did work closely with Fort Collins. On some of our, our comprehensive land use plan, our growth management area. It butted up right against us some conservation easements by the town of Fort Collins. And understanding what those conservation easements are and how they work and how they can be tailored. Quite frankly, is, is, is going to be a key issue here. I understand there's a, there's a question about a conservation easement now. Before the board that needs to be discussed and resolved. This kind of gets back to some of your policy about affordable housing. You know, if you're going to have a conservation easement plan where you want to preserve open space for trails, for recreation and so forth, it's good to have a policy in place. Before you're, before you go out there and just, again, start, you know, acting on the fly or this sounds like a great idea. Let's think this thing through, understand what you're willing to do and what you, and identify those areas that you want to do that. I mentioned the strategic plan you, that you've got upcoming. And this is another need is you, your long-range comprehensive plan, the land use plan is eleven years old. It needs to be updated. That comp plan will help you identify areas for possible open space. And now you've got the flexibility. Of identifying those areas in advance so that you can start budgeting and you can start making plans for those conservation easements.
Have you been in a major role before in a mountain community or in an area with limited access? To resources and, and employee pool? What did you learn from this role and how would you propose addressing staff develop, development and retention?
Well, I've never worked in a mountain town before. I'll just put that out there. Fulton, Illinois was, like I said, a small town, is in rural Illinois. We had a problem with our young people that were, you know, graduated from high school and leaving. So we had a, an aging population and finding experienced staff. Can be difficult. It wasn't difficult in, in Wellington. You know, we made a commitment that we are going to. Bring in the best talent that we could afford. And that we've, quite frankly, we did a great job recruiting the right people for the job to do that. I do know that finding employees is going to be tougher here. The cost of living is going to be prohibitive. I think you need to find some innovative solution, your affordable housing action, option and. Your focus there will help resolve some of that, but getting people to leave. Maybe a community like a Fort Collins where there's tremendous opportunities for entertainment, for dining, for, for activities. And leave that lifestyle to move over here can be difficult. What I have found by working in Fulton, Illinois is about developing the existing staff you've got there. And bringing better opportunities to them and challenging them so that they can perform maybe at a higher level than, than what they've seen in the past. How would I address staff development and retention? Again, I've already talked about that, what I did in Wellington. About training, about empowering employees, about giving them a voice. One of the things that we did, we, we had biannual team building meetings. Our last team building meeting. I had every employee fill out a three-by-five index card. And just one question, one or two sentences would be the answer. I said, when was the first time you felt that your job, that you made a difference in your job? When was the first time that happened? And we did our team building exercise and at the end I read the responses back, or some of the responses. And I was surprised to find out that, that. People hadn't thought about that before, but one of the answers that stood out the most to me was somebody just had one word and they said today. I think it's because they felt like they had a manager who cared, a manager who is, who is. Who believed in them, supported them and gave them the opportunities they needed to excel.
Frazier has benefited from the stability of previous manager being in that role for a number of years. What do you think is the right amount of time for a manager in a place to be most effective? How do you see this position fitting into your career plans and progression?
I, I think in there are, in our preliminary interview via Zoom, that same similar question was asked. And I mentioned that, you know, under my profession with the ICMA. We are ethically bound to give the community a minimum of two years. And that's quite frankly, because. Your first year is, a lot of that time is spent getting to know the community, getting to know the staff, understanding the complexities of all the challenges facing the organization. And the, and the suggestions or the recommendations or the changes that, that you're putting in place. May take some time before you see the results of that. So usually that first year is about a lot of planning, a lot about implementing those processes. And in the second year, you start seeing some, some results from that. I've always admired a manager who can say, yeah, I've been there for twenty-five years, you know? I mean, this sometimes can be a tough job. And every two years, sometimes that complement of the board of trustees can change and, and you find yourself maybe going in a different direction. The right amount of time for a manager? I think it's about understanding what the role is, understanding what the priorities are and how long it takes you to get it done. How this fits in my, in my career plans. I'd like to retire, to be honest with you. I would like to, to work here. I feel like I've got. Seven to eight more years of, of high effective time on my hands, but I'm going to get to a point where my wife says, I'm, let's, let's retire, let's travel the world. Let's, let's just do different things. So, you know, I do have some long-range goals, personal goals of myself, but I also feel like that I'm really in my prime.
One of the biggest challenges in Frazier and many mountain communities is the cost of living, especially housing. What experience do you have with affordable housing and/or workforce housing initiative? And what would you propose for Frazier that it might want to consider?
You know, the cost of housing and the cost of living is not just a mountain community problem. Fort Collins itself is going through the same question because the demand for housing in Colorado, because this is a wonderful place to live. More people are coming here and that's driving the cost of housing up. And I think it's challenging in mountain towns because you've got more resort living and more second homes and which is going to drive the, the cost up even more. And finding a good housing option for your employees, not just for your, your town employees, but also the employees that are. You know, helping out at the restaurant or, or working at the gas station or the retail shop or. You know, they, they do their, their seasonal work up at. At the ski resort. It's a challenge. My experience with that, I talked about, we brought in section forty-two housing and, in Fulton. Several months ago, a recruiter called me and. They wanted me to apply for the executive director position at the Aspen Pickens County Housing Authority. So I did a deep dive into what Aspen Pickens County was doing for their housing authority. And it's a similar model to what Vale is doing and what other mountain communities are doing. I think. In that community, they owned about eighteen hundred properties that the town had owned. They had almost three thousand deed restricted properties. And those were their two primary focuses. But one of the things that I think you should also look at is, is. You know, I had base housing in the military, you know, it was, it was, it was a perk. No one joins the military for the money, I'll be honest with you. But having a place to live and having those utilities taken care of was such a benefit, you could raise your family and not go on food stamps. Because a lot of these places were in Chicago and Miami and Seattle and, and high, high cost of living areas there. So maybe we should also look at maybe dormitory style housing for some of those seasonal workers. Maybe I noticed in your budget, you had a, a fund there that talked about. The housing authority. And I don't know if that was an old fund here, but it had absolutely no money or no funds allocated to it. The Frazier Housing Authority. Maybe explore partnering with a nonprofit and someone that could manage. You know, those properties. I, I think there's, there's a lot of different opportunities out there. The model that you're using from Vale is, is a great model. Find a way to sustain that and find sufficient funding for that so that you can continue doing that. You're going to be in the same boat. I, I mean, I talked to half of the staff today and they live in Granby. They live other places, you know, they, they have a. Long way to drive sometime for work and I imagine the winter time, it can be pretty tough. So I think you need to be flexible. I think you need to be, again, entrepreneurial in your approach and think about. Well, let's try this. I'm sure your, your town attorney would tell you what you can and can't do. But I believe he also has some flexibility there as well.
When would you be available to start?
I understand that Wes is with you for a short while. And quite frankly, I'm. Been a good friend of Wes for a number of years and, and from all I've heard, he's just done a wonderful job for you there. I would like to start with sufficient time so that we have some overlap so that I can better understand. You know, the progress that's been made, not just during Wes's six months here, but also the progress that was made before. There are some, there are some issues with some contractors. There are some issues with developers. There are some issues in other areas as well. And I'd like to have be. Have the opportunity to, to get to understand those more thoroughly. So I'm thinking sometime early June.
In closing, the town has contacted your references and conducted a background check. Is there anything you'd like to make the board aware of?
I'm a rule follower. I'm sorry, I, I, I don't have any kind of. Legal problems or credit problems or anything like that. My role as a town manager is not to be that, that. Showboat or anything else. I like to stand in the background and just, and just make sure we get the job done there. But there's nothing in my background that would, that would be detrimental or an embarrassment to the town of Frazier. Nor would they be should you select me as your, as your, as your town manager.
Great, thank you. Any follow-up questions from the board? He's after.
No. I was, I was the CEO of Cannon Roofing. Yeah. I ran seven crews. We did commercial and residential. And we also did gutters. For a time there, I was looking at expanding the business. I talked to an electrical engineer. And a marketing person about expanding to bring in solar as part of our portfolio. So I did extensive research on what it would take to, to, to bring solar or convert a house to solar or new construction about how we might be able to step in and provide that level of service. Which was sorely needed in, in, in Alabama. But at the end of the day, we decided not to go that route. But that was, that was my role. Of course, sometimes you have to climb a ladder. Sometimes you have to, you know, do an inspection or something like that, but. And I've, I've mashed my fingers so many times, driving a few nails. So I do understand the workload that goes with that.
If I can piggyback off of that, how do you feel managing that business? Affects how you do a job like what you're applying for now?
I managed that business from two thousand and one till about two thousand and eleven. And if you recall, the recession hit during that time period and. It hit the housing market, I think, the hardest of all. We lost almost seventy-five percent of our revenues when that happened. And I think in some ways it was a blessing in disguise. You know, when we were, before that happened, quite frankly, it's hard to keep up with the demand because. Everyone was buying houses with no money down and zero interest loans and so forth and, or interest-only loans and. Credit was readily available and, and, and the housing market was just jumping. And when that bubble burst and the recession hit. It required a little bit more analysis of how we actually manage the business. Through that process, I was able to. Focus more on my strengths. I did my own SWOT analysis on, on my business, focus more on my strengths. What do we do? What do we do well? What do we do not so well? Where's our biggest profit margin? We went from seven crews down to one crew. We formed partnerships with other agencies, with, with Realtors, with remodelers. We changed our focus. We started managing our resources and our time better. We changed the way we marketed our, our business. And actually saw a steep increase in our profit margin. And through that time period, I was able to pay two kids through college, keep up with my mortgage, alimony to an ex-wife and. Actually put her through college too. So I was able to stay successful during that time period. What it taught me and I, I, it didn't really teach me, I think what it, it challenged me to start thinking about. How the business is run, not necessarily about just running the business. And maybe that's what my focus is so much about, about the journey you get to that end point. So I do look for efficiencies within an organization. I do look for ways that we can leverage partnerships and build alliances. You know, I, I did that in, in my business and I, I've done that in, in, in both in Fulton and Wellington and I continue, I plan to continue to do that here in Frazier. I'm, I'm more comfortable in jeans and cowboy boots, actually be honest with you. Of course, this is an official occasion, but, and there's times when I may be out and have to represent Frazier, maybe at the state level and so forth. You know? I was offered a job. Before I took the job in, in Fulton, Illinois, town of Carpenter'sville, Illinois. The manager and I were good friends. He wanted to hire me not as the manager there as an assistant. He wanted me to be the public works director. And he said, Ed, you speak blue collar. You under, you understand this. And when you own a construction company, you understand what, what blue collar work is, you know? I, I don't see, I actually, I don't see a problem there. Well. Many years ago, the town of Wellington formed an IGA with the town of Fort Collins and also of Larrimer County. And it was about stormwater management. Box Elder Creek ran through these regions and a lot of, lot of future development was going to be hindered because it was in a flood plain. So the three organizations formed an IGA, developed something called the Box Elder Stormwater Authority. And there was a partnership arrangement for how we would fund a couple of improvements, a couple of major capital improvements. When that deal was stuck, struck, everyone was, was pretty satisfied with that. But in the, in the years that followed, Wellington was growing at nine percent a year. And our population was, was changing that equation. And the share that was originally agreed upon from Wellington was starting to, you know, surpass, greatly surpass. That of Fort Collins and Larrimer County. And it was causing concern among our board of trustees. Our citizens because of the, the stormwater fees. And there was concern that, that the management of the Stormwater Authority was really just kind of. Not looking out for the towns. not looking out for the town's best interest to some degree. So what we had to do in that situation, and this was right after I was hired, and it took about nine months of negotiation, but I worked with Fort Collins and Larrimer County and eventually even with the town of Timmouth. And we wrote an amendment to that IGA. We evaluated, again, that original agreement, we evaluated our growth, we looked at those capital costs. We found a way to agree upon capping those costs to each organization. We found a way to, Timmouth saw the advantage that was coming to them because without the Stormwater Authority, Timmouth would have seen a lot of their community as well move into this flood plain. And we formed a new IGA and new organization that had better alignment of the funds and how we would pay for this. It also spelled an end to the Box Elder Stormwater Authority, which prior to that, it just seemed like a monster that was just going to keep going on and on and just keep, you know, draining all three organizations. We even formed an audit, committed to go through and audit Stormwater Authority's auditor to make sure that those allocation of funds would be spent according to this new agreement. It was at times contentious, but other times it was very productive because I think at the end of the day, we left with a better relationship with all three organizations. And we also really showed these other organizations that Wellington wants to be a partner in this and work together to find solutions. And it was a great solution, you know, Wes can attest to that as well. But it's, you know, again, how do you find a win-win solution for this? If I could get maybe Antonet or Michael to hand these out?
Yeah, so SWOT is a general business term for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities.
And threats.
Threats. And how to analyze those and use those to better your... Yeah, not a SWOT thing.
I am. There are a couple avenues within the state of Colorado that allows you to encourage development. Most of those come with restrictions, you know, is it an obliterated area or so forth like that? Is it in a flood plain? The list of criteria is pretty steep, but there's a couple of avenues that municipalities can form. One is a downtown development authority, I talked about that briefly. The other one is a, Wes, you're going to help, I've lost my train of thought on this. Timmouth did this, they had a...
Oh, we had DDAs, we had Downtown Development Authority that worked along with the town. So even though it was a separate unit, with the board also filled that well, much like you do with your housing authority. But what it did is it targeted a specific area. So the people in that area were responsible for doing, redoing the development in that area. So, but it also gave them a ton of flexibility as well when it came to zoning and overlay zoning and those kinds of...
And another advantage from these type of opportunities is that you can create something called tax increment financing. That's what TIF stands for. Tax increment financing says, okay, we draw a baseline that says this is what our property taxes are at this level. We're to continue to, you know, all these taxing districts, you know, the fire protection district, your library district, the county and so forth, any school districts are kind of locked in to that revenue stream at that baseline level for the duration of the TIF. Any additional tax revenues goes back into the TIF and those monies can be used to spur economic development, to provide incentives for development, for developers to maybe overcome infrastructure issues and so forth. That's just one of those revenue streams that you can, similar of business improvement district can do the same thing. I saw that, although it doesn't have the TIF designation as well. I've passed out, and I know that we're running short on time, you've got another thing, but I've passed out a copy of my 30, 60-day plan here. I just want to touch on a couple of things with that. I talked about that SWOT analysis. The SWOT analysis really has nothing to do with the team. It has nothing to do with staff. SWOT analysis is the organization. What are we good at? You know, what do we don't do so well? What are the opportunities that are available to us? And what are those threats to those opportunities? Those threats could be environmental, they could be commercial, they could be things like affordable housing. Those are the kind of threats that you need to access. So briefly, I'll just go over this, it's divided into three-month period. The first month, I always believe firmly, it's all about learning. You know, I'm reluctant to make major decisions in that first 30 days. They can tell you understand what the culture of the organization is, which you understand your strengths and weaknesses of your staff. So I'm going to let you read that, I don't want to read the whole thing because, again, we're running out of time. The second 60 days is about starting to make contributions. This is where I can say, okay, this is my understanding of where we are. Maybe here's some ways we can find some efficiencies. And this is when I start contributing on a more substantial basis. And the third is really about leading and making an impact. This is where I should be hitting the ground full force, you know, in day 60 through 90. So if any of you have any questions about that, please feel free to reach out to me. You've all got my email address and you can ask questions, you know, kind of offline if you'd like. But I did want you to know that I have thought about what it would take for me to be successful in this job. And this is just an outline of my steps to take so that I can get up to speed quickly as your next manager.
Great. Do you have any questions for us?
I have a lot. And I'm hoping that first meeting in June, we can get a chance to talk about that. You know, I discussed your needs and so forth and some of those sustainable issues there. Did I miss anything?
You did your homework?
Definitely did your homework.
Well, again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Truly, I'm honored to be considered to be your next town manager. I would love to have this position. Again, my wife and I, we've always enjoyed this part of the country. I think I mentioned before that every year we camp out at Grand Lake in Arapahoe Bay, we ski at Winter Park. And my wife was thinking, well, we'll have two households, but now she's thinking, no, we just need to move to Fraser.
Sorry, I have just a minute, could I ask one more question?
Certainly.
So you've had a long career in military and a long career in municipal. Could you talk just a little bit about difference in military versus municipal management?
That's a great question. I think a lot of people have a misunderstanding of maybe what the military has to offer. And I think that's because we watch a lot of movies and TV shows and we think that's what the military is. My 20 years in the military, I got the great opportunity to receive some of the most phenomenal training in leadership and management than you can imagine. I mean, I would challenge the training that I received in the military with anything that's going on in the private sector. If you take the Harvard Executive School and look at any one of those classes, there's probably one or two military members in that class as well. They want you to lead and to lead, you need to know how to lead, you need to have experience with leading. You need to be exposed to as many leadership styles as you can. I'd never say that I'm this kind of a leader, you know, but I do tend to be a little more visionary in my leader because I'm very strategic in my thought. I don't think as much about what's going to happen tomorrow as I am about what's going to happen 10 years from now and what's the impact of what we're doing down the road. You need to be flexible. You know, working with a small mountain town versus a larger community like Wellington, that leadership style sometimes may need to change. The capabilities of your staff, their professionalism, their training, their expertise, all of these take a different leadership style. You may need to be more laissez-faire and just kind of let everybody go. My job as a manager is to make staff shine, really, is to make their job easier, to give them all the tools that they need to do their job. You've got a great staff. And quite frankly, I don't see myself doing as much leading as just supporting.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ed. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ed.
Put my jeans in cowboy boots. I got my leaving planet Earth button.
Michael, do we have 30 minutes or an hour? Can you let the... So we're going to take a 30-minute break and then we'll be back. Thanks, everyone.
We are unmuted. The U has started.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome Greg.
Thank you.
And we are public, we are back live. So we're going to continue this process and we're going to do the same process that we did with the two prior candidates. We will ask you same questions. There will be most likely follow up questions. Then you can ask us some questions. Okay?
Sure.
And first question is please provide a brief summary of your education and work experience identifying how these would inform your role as town manager.
So work experience, I currently am a town administrator in Cedar Edge, Colorado. It is a community on the western slope of about twenty-three hundred people in Delta County. Not quite full service, but we do run our water and sewer utility. We do have a police force and municipal golf course. So we do run quite a bit in town. As far as education, I do have a master's of public administration from CU Denver. I graduated a few years ago from there and then I did my undergrad at the University of Kansas with a degree in sociology. Work experience prior to being the administrator in Cedar Edge, I was an administrative intern there for a couple of years. And then took over for the prior manager. Before I got into local government, I was in the nonprofit sector and nonprofit management. And that's where I really thought that I was gonna stay because I love nonprofits and their really dedicated mission. Went back to school to get my MPA to focus in nonprofit management and I thought I'd knock out one of those required classes for semester. Chap and B local government and I didn't quite think that that was going to change the course of my career as much as it did, but in that class and in that semester, I really got to see what local government can do and how it really is the cornerstone in making communities better and making people's lives better. And I really fell in love with local government then. And then as I've worked in local government have continued to fall in love with the career and the profession.
Okay. Why this position in Frazier right now for you and how are you a good fit for this role? What do you bring that others might not?
So I'm at the point in my career where I am looking for new challenges. Cedar Edge was never a lifetime place for me. It was really a an eighteen month internship is what I thought it was gonna be and have rounding out five and a half years at this point. I really loved the community, but I was never the right fit for the community. It's a retirement community. And so I was never the perfect fit there. So I have been looking for other opportunities to grow my career. When I had first saw that the Frazier position may be open, I was incredibly interested in it. Spent a little bit of time kind of in high school and a little bit in middle school coming up to the area. Grew up in the Denver metro. So coming up to the Frazier Valley, so was familiar with the area and was really excited when I thought that this position may be coming open. So kept my eye on it. And then when it did open after doing quite a bit of research, thought that I could be a good fit for the community. I I know small towns and I know those dynamics and how challenging they can be coming from a town of twenty-three hundred. And how, you know, you you see everyone at the grocery store and or out at breakfast or wherever else. So was excited about that and and all of the opportunities that Frazier presents with the potential growth. There are a few issues that I have really wanted to work on in my career that haven't had a ton of opportunity. Affordable housing being one of those where taken all the seminars, I love to go to all of those at conferences. But affordable housing is not a huge challenge in Cedar Edge. So really excited to dive into some of those challenges. And then personally, it just felt like a good fit, a good community. And I came up and visited before I submitted my application and spent a weekend and walked around and it just, it just felt right. So I was excited to submit the application.
Great. Thank you. Can you describe your management and leadership style with specific, I'm sorry, with specific focus on the town manager's role in working with staff, the community and with the town board?
So my leadership style, I am very much a servant leader. I think that the best way to bring out the best in those that I supervise is to know what they want and know what their desires are and help them achieve that and make sure that that aligns with their job and and what they like to do. I am very much not a micromanager. I think that in this position, you hire staff who are capable of doing their jobs and you let them do their jobs. That doesn't mean that there's no accountability or that there's no oversight, but it's not constant oversight. So how I work in my current role as town manager with staff is those that I directly supervise. We meet one-on-one monthly. And that's how I keep in touch of what's going on in their day-to-day. And then that they can keep me informed. If there's any projects or anything that we're working on. Of course, I'll check in more regularly, but at least once a month I check in one-on-one with all staff that I supervise. And then with the town board, I try at least, we don't quite make it monthly, but at least quarterly, I meet one-on-one with all board members to keep, just to keep the communication going, to keep that relationship going that if the manager and then a trustee only see each other at a board meeting once or twice a month, maybe a few work sessions in there, it's not quite an opportunity to have a robust conversation of what the trustee wants to see moving forward and what those expectations are in that relationship. So I don't quite do those monthly. There are trustees who like to meet more regularly and I definitely am open to scheduling that, but at least quarterly check-ins with the board. And then of course with the mayor meeting much more frequently than monthly or quarterly. And then with the community, in a small town, you need to be a part of the community. You need to be shopping locally, bringing friends and family into the community, be seen around the community. And whether that, you know, can look like a lot of different things and not personally a member of any service organizations in Cedar Edge, but I definitely help out at all their events and and show up to community events. So I think it's important to be seen and be a part of the community.
What is your experience with ideas for facilitating cooperative efforts with neighboring jurisdictions and with voters? Please describe your experience interacting with neighboring communities. Is your style to work collaboratively with them or to compete with them?
I I can be competitive for sure in day-to-day, but I think that the best way to get things done is to work collaboratively with people. If you don't have buy-in and if you don't have agreement, I think it's really difficult to go it alone. The town of Cedar Edge, we are not directly adjacent to another municipality. There's one municipality just south of us, the town of Orchard City. They kind of keep to themselves. They like to, they run their water. They essentially run their water utility and that's about all they do as a town. But we work collaboratively with the county and we work collaboratively with the city of Delta a lot in Cedar Edge. And I have harped on this in Delta County for five and a half years since I moved over there is that, you know, the city of Delta cannot directly compete with the city of Montrose or the city of Grand Junction. They just don't have what those other two cities have to offer, but the county as a whole has incredible things to offer. And that if we work together collaboratively to put forward Delta County and compete Delta County against the city of Montrose or the city of Grand Junction, then that's our best foot forward. And we've actually worked really well with the city of Delta in that. They hired a kind of a marketing and event coordinator. And he has worked well with our town clerk and putting together advertisements for the city of Delta really, but capturing everything that Cedar Edge and our area have to offer residents and visitors who might be coming in. So and then in addition to that, we worked across the county to pass a one percent sales tax for law enforcement. So that was an idea that started, the first time we brought it before voters was in November twenty nineteen. And this was a collaborative effort between the county, the city of Delta, town of Cedar Edge, and then the towns of Hotchkiss and Peonia. So there were five agencies involved and brought it before voters. Had a had a pretty good run at it in November nineteen and we very narrowly lost. And then decided to bring it back before the voters kind of reevaluate what we were asking of the voters like you do when you lose a sales tax question and see if we could be more better stewards of what we were asking. So we reduced the percentage a little bit and we gave the tax a sunset so that voters had the opportunity to reevaluate that sales tax in the coming years. So it was successful in November twenty twenty. Very successful. I think it was, I think it was like a fifty-eight or fifty-nine percent passing. So I have worked collaboratively with neighboring jurisdictions and I think it's critically important to be collaborative.
Can you tell us your experience in providing oversight of a wastewater treatment plant, joint use facility and/or a special district for the same?
So I don't have any experience overseeing a joint use facility of different agencies or different districts using one facility. But the town of Cedar Edge does have a wastewater treatment facility. It's a Class A mechanical batch plant that was newly constructed in twenty sixteen, or it was finished construction in twenty sixteen. So I came on with the town in January of that year and we started discharging from the plant in May of that year. So in, I think it was June. So anyway, shortly into the year. In those few short months, I had to deal with CDPHG and our discharge permit and they wanted to, we, this was, so for a small, small town, upgrading from a lagoon system, which is what we had to a mechanical plant was, you know, that's night and day for how you treat wastewater. And so, and it was a five million dollar project for a small rural and frankly, poor community. It was pretty difficult. It took the town about a decade to get the funding sources all lined up. And then at the last minute, when the plant was all but finished and discharging, CDPHG wanted to change our permit. And so kind of got that firsthand experience in working with CDPHG. And then working with those who oversee CDPHG and working with our state senator and state representative on this because this was a project that we were working hand-in-hand with CDPHG from day one, a decade before the plant was ready to go live. So we did get that discharge permit approved and the plant has been running and it's a brand-new plant. And I know that the Frazier plant has just added treatment at the end of the plant to get rid of, is it nitrogen and phosphorus? All right. So and phosphorus was actually what CDPHG wanted us to start removing from that, which as you know, is a whole nother process on top of it. But so, yeah, I do oversee our wastewater treatment facility. I don't directly oversee our ORC down there. That does fall under public works. I'm sorry, our public works director oversees the wastewater treatment operator, but then I do oversee public works.
The town heavily relies on sales tax income. Do you have experience developing a diverse revenue stream and how would you engage the public?
Yeah. Delta County historically did not have a very diverse economy. We were historically a mining community and had three coal mines. And we all know what the coal industry has done over the last decade or so. So when I came on with the town, that was a huge push is how do we continue to diversify our economy? And how do we continue to not rely on these, you know, six-figure jobs that over, I think that, I think that it's about fifteen hundred jobs that were lost in Delta County, which doesn't sound like a ton, but there's only thirty thousand people in the county. So it's pretty significant for sales tax. So we have worked to diversify and to attract businesses. That kind of goes back to working collaboratively with the other towns and with the county. One thing that we did is we reorganized the economic development, the EDC that was in in the community. It just, the private sector had lost trust with the particular EDC. It just hadn't done enough for private buy-in, private businesses to continue to support it. So what we've done over the last couple of years is started the conversation and and have seen it through, but taking the EDC, which was a five oh one C three nonprofit and folding it into the county. And so the county now oversees the EDC. And we have IGAs with all the municipalities for financial buy-in. So everyone pays into the county to the purpose of it was the ability to afford high-level staff. A nonprofit couldn't provide benefits or anything else and really couldn't provide a competitive wage. So we were never getting high-level staff in those positions and that was difficult for us. So rolling it into the county was able to provide benefits and we hired an incredibly talented director for that position. So as far as diversifying the economy, it's still in flux and in conversation. One big thing that that organization prior to getting moved in under the county did was we built out fiber throughout the county. So we do have gigabit internet speeds in all the municipalities, not not everywhere in the county because it is very rural. So they haven't stretched everywhere, but that is the plan. And it was a partnership with DMEA, which is our local rural energy co-op. So that's been huge for us too.
What is your assessment of the critical issues facing the town and what are the opportunities?
So I think that some of So I think that some of the, some of the issues are fairly obvious is that the town is in a point of tremendous growth. And there's a community that has lived here their whole lives and maybe for generations, who don't want to see the kind of growth that's coming in. And that's a significant tension that you can see even just as driving around without even engaging anyone. You can see that there are parts of town that frankly, could probably use some redevelopment and have chosen not to. And there are parts of town that are brand new, new streets, new buildings, new homes and new businesses. And so that's going to provide, that's just going to lead to tension within the community. We have that in Cedar Edge and I think I joked earlier that if you're not four generations, you're not a local. So the, the newcomers or people coming in and the perception that they may be changing the quality of life or the style of life, that's just always going to be in tension. And the, the, the board and the, and the local government can do a lot to work through that tension and engage the public. You're not, no one's all going to be on the same page and you're not going to necessarily see, you know, unanimous, unanimous support with whatever the decision is. But that I think is a, is a critical issue. And then, and then working with the developers, I mean, that's clearly a sticking point. That has been tough to work through. And I think one of the opportunities for that is, well, there's a couple. One, I think the town is in a place to really update their full comp plan. Not, the town has some really good additional plans with the Cozens Open Space Plan, the, the River Corridor Plan and a few other ones. But taking and looking at the, the full comprehensive plan, I think that it could be time to update that, integrate some of those newer plans into it and bring the full community into where they want to see the town grow and how they want to see the town grow implementing those things. Other opportunities, I think, seeing that the, the board has updated some of the land use code and some of the development code more recently. But having an idea and a consensus of what types of projects and what types of projects deserve incentives and what types of incentives go along with those projects. And having a clear idea of what the board and what the community wants to essentially subsidize with those incentives and what types of projects really are on the developer and on the project to pay their way. And having that clear understanding going forward, I think, could avoid some of the issues that have popped up that I've seen. Those are probably the, the ones that have stuck out to me.
What role should the manager have with the community? What issues are you aware of from your research of Fraser? What would be your approach given what you know now?
So have said it before, the manager needs to be, excuse me, a part of the community. Need to be involved and seen and out there. And that doesn't mean that they are, you know, necessarily taking sides in the community or having agreements or telling people that they can do one thing or another as they're out in the community, but just being a part of the community. Issues that I'm aware of from the research. You know, I think that sometimes it's, it can be difficult in a small town to keep, keep relationships separate, to keep professional relationships professional and personal relationships personal in a small town that can really blend and it can be easy for that to blend. What my approach is, is that, you know, I, I try my hardest not to talk about work stuff outside of work. You'll see me out and about. If someone comes up and they've got a brief question about something, I'm happy to have that conversation. Brief conversation, but I make it pretty clear that if someone wants to take, you know, an hour of my time as I'm shopping for groceries to talk about a development application, that this is not the appropriate time to do that, that you can, we can absolutely schedule a time to do that. I'd be happy to have that conversation. But as the town manager, I'm not the professional working town manager 24/7 to answer anyone's questions as they see me. Happy to have brief conversations, but when I'm in, on my personal time, being on my personal time. So I think that that, for me in Cedar Edge, has made that very easy to be a part of the community and to avoid some of those, you know, they want to, not gotcha conversations by any means, but someone, you know, it's convenient for someone who sees you. And then, you know, if you have that conversation, the chances of wanting, the chances of wanting to end the conversation and accidentally saying something that you didn't mean to say or that you, you didn't want to come out, I think just increases those chances. So keeping those conversations during work hours makes sense.
What is your experience making a thorough assessment of an organization, staff and board, and then leading through necessary changes?
So I did have to do that in Cedar Edge and I had, you know, a little bit of an inside track, having worked for the town for a couple of years prior to taking over as the manager. But still had to come in and assume the role as a manager, very similar situation. The prior manager was in her position for 12 years in Cedar Edge. And so had spent a lot of time and some of those issues that you see with a long-term manager that people know how to operate in your blind spots, so to speak. Needed to be addressed. And so coming into that role, assessing the organization, we didn't have a lot of necessarily staffing, like staffing level decisions, like we didn't need to expand or contract employees. But we definitely had to evaluate a few employees and not all employees stayed with the, with the town after the first six months of me coming in. Oh, and then assessment of the board, I think that is, that, that's a lot of, well, both are just a lot of conversations. It's a lot of getting to know people. It's a lot of getting to understand why people serve, why they are in their job, what they want to see and taking the time to really evaluate. And, and what I think is necessary is not taking any drastic decision too quickly, but having a good understanding before any significant decisions are made.
Can you talk about your experience in major land use or development negotiations? What has been your role in that process and would it be similar in Fraser?
So we don't, in Cedar Edge, we haven't had a lot of huge development. There was a lot of development that was approved right before the financial crisis. And so all the infrastructure was built out, had about 150 subdivided, ready to build single-family homes. And then of course, 2008 hit, the financial crisis bottomed out. And the western slope has historically just been a lot slower to recover. We didn't really recover until 2016. So it's only been in the last few years that we've started to see that development get built out. So there hasn't been a market for a big, kind of a big, big development. We've had smaller developments. My role in that has been, the town does contract out our planning services. And so I was the point of contact initially with any developer, any land use application. And then I didn't process the application. That all went through our planner. But as far as my role, it was to make sure that the town was following the code that was set before us. And that even if the code was clunky and a little bit difficult to work through, it's still the code and the, and, and the legally binding ordinances of the town. And so we experienced that with, with our code is that it was put in in 2010. It never got used until the last couple of years. And so we've had to work through a lot of that. And, and frankly, it wasn't an easy process with developers because they wanted a nice, simple, easy process. And that's not what our code allowed for. So my role in that was very much to make sure that town code was followed. What I would see my role in Fraser is, is fairly similar in the sense that there's a planning department to process the actual application and make sure that everything is to code. As far as my role as the manager is to make sure that, that the code is being followed and that if there's anything that needs to be done or amended within the code, that the board and myself have those conversations, hopefully on the front end of an application and not during an application. And I think that harps back to the idea of understanding what projects should, the town should provide incentives for and what those incentives should be.
Do you have experience and ideas to help enhance disaster preparedness and build resiliency in our community in the face of an uncertain future? What is your experience with trails, parks and open space development?
So disaster preparedness, the county did go through a process about two years ago. We updated our multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. We do have similar challenges to Fraser with wildfire and drought are two major disasters that could come through and thankfully have avoided fires. But mother nature has not been kind on the drought end of things for town. And so we've worked hard to beef up our water resources and, and some of our really kind of moved up some capital improvements to tighten up our system so that we'd have less leakage in that. Disaster preparedness is just making sure that you have plans in place and that you are ready for the unexpected. So have experience with that. And then face of an uncertain future, you know, part of that is having a good fiscal policy that you've got adequate reserves and, and the appropriate funds to be able to address issues as they were to come up. Not spending down your fund balance, say, and, you know, in the wastewater fund to the point that if there's a major mainline break, you don't have the funds to address an emergency. And I've seen that in small towns and neighboring small towns who've had those issues. Experience in trails, parks, open space development, I do have quite a bit of experience in that. Worked in, Delta County was awarded a grant through GOCO Great Outdoors Colorado. It was their Inspire Initiative. And I don't know, I don't think that anyone was awarded around here. But it was a, it was a grant, the, the intent of it was to get kids outside to even in rural communities with great access to the outdoors. There are parts of our community that either don't have the financial ability to get outside and enjoy the outdoors or just don't quite have the access. So we're not directly adjacent to any national forests. We do have a little bit of distance between us. So working with that grant and building out trails and open space. And we've worked really hard in town to beef up our trail system. It was a half a mile when I started. It's a mile and a half now. So we've tripled in, in, in distance. But do have plans to continue that. But you know, we're only, we're only two miles long. So we've got almost the whole town covered at this point. So yeah, do have experience with that.
Have you been in a manager role before in a mountain community or in an area with limited access to resources and employee pool? What did you learn from this role and how would you propose addressing staff development and retention?
Yeah, so Cedar Edge is, I like to call us mountain adjacent. You know, we're not in the mountains, but we're on the, the south slope of the mesa. And so we're, we're pretty close to the mountains. But we do struggle a lot with recruiting and retaining employees. That is a constant struggle for us. Most of our challenges have to do with mostly around compensation for us. That's our biggest struggle to overcome is that we can't compete with our neighboring jurisdictions. Montrose and Mesa counties have bigger communities, bigger cities, can afford to pay, you know, frontline staff and police officers and all of that quite a bit more than we can afford to pay. How we work to really overcome that is it's not just about compensation for employees. A lot of times it is about lifestyle. It is about organizational culture. So we've worked really hard to build that in Cedar Edge so that our employees feel like they're a part of a community, that they have the opportunity to raise their family in a safe, welcoming community. And so a lot of our employees stay because we've got great schools. We've got a great community and frankly, they like their boss and their coworkers. So we've worked hard on that and we are constantly working to get compensation up too. I think so, yeah.
Fraser has benefited from the stability of previous manager, manager being in that role for a number of years. What do you think is the right amount of time for a manager in a place to be most effective? And how do you see this position fitting into your career plans and progression?
So the ICMA Code of Ethics for city manager, city county manager says that the appropriate amount of time is two years, which I feel is very short. I think that an appropriate amount of time to be able to get to know the community, to be able to really see some projects from start to finish is in the five-year range. And that, that is, when I say appropriate, I mean appropriate on the short end, to be able to see things progress. Typically that'll take you through one board or board and a half for the, for those two years, depending on, you know, when the majority may or may not turn over. But you get to work with a board throughout their full-time serving. So I think that that is a good amount of time. What I see this position fitting in my career is I, I see this as a long-term position that I don't see, I don't see my career being every, you know, two, three years going to a new community because that, I have got a lot of years left and that would be a lot of moving around. I don't think I could quite handle that. But I do see that as, do see this as a long-term opportunity for myself, absolutely.
One of the biggest challenges in Fraser and many mountain communities is the cost of living, especially housing. What experience do you have with affordable housing and/or workforce housing initiative? And what would you propose for Fraser that it might want to consider?
So I don't have a lot of direct experience in working with workforce housing. That is becoming something that is, is a rising kind of secondary tertiary issue in Cedar Edge and Delta County that prices are starting to go up and while we're not a mountain community, we're just more rural. And so wages are much lower. And so it's finding, it's becoming an issue or becoming something that may be an issue moving forward. But I have had the opportunity to learn from a lot of communities that have been really successful in affordable housing and what they've been able to do. And the ones that I've seen be most successful, don't, you know, look at one approach and say, this is what we're going to do and that's all we're going to do. It really is a Um, it really is a kind of uh every every approach possible. See how that can fit in to help mitigate some of the issues. Um, one thing that I've seen um just in reading um just in reading what uh the town of Frazier has done, what the town of Winter Park has done, and um of course, Winter Park has dedicated funding towards housing um or towards affordable housing. And so that makes it easier to address when you've got dedicated funding towards it. Um, but something that that I don't see in either community is um there's short-term rental registrations, uh but there's no limit on short-term rentals. And so that's a conversation that I think um is incredibly challenging, incredibly difficult, um but can be really successful. Um, I know that the towns of Crested Butte and Mount Crested Butte had, I think it was in 2017, that they imposed limits on short-term rentals um as far as communities and new new construction and things like that. And they saw a little bit of uh pushback. I um talked to Dara, the town manager down in Crested Butte, a little bit about this. Um, and uh they saw a little bit of of pushback initially. But um it's been really successful and has really helped uh keep some of those new constructions in uh with the ability for locals to be able to purchase them, uh especially if it's gonna be a lower price point construction that if, you know, if fifty, seventy percent are getting bought up as investments for short-term rentals, all of a sudden you're you're out half your possible um affordable housing stock right away. So I think that's one thing to consider. Um, I know that the town has worked on the deed restriction um and and has um is it? I think it's just the one. Um, is it just the one? Yeah. Um, so I think that that that's a great program that can be uh worked to be implemented a little bit better, I think. Um, yeah, um, but those are those are the two that stick out to me initially. Um, and then at the kind of at the end of the day, the community needs to determine who pays for affordable housing and and whose responsibility is it? Is it just a developer? Is it the whole community? Um, is it uh how do you work to start implementing this? Because if there's not a if there's not a funding stream to work towards a housing authority or if there's not um, you know, regulations that require a certain amount of affordable units for new projects, then it's really tough to start um building those out. So um I think that those are all opportunities for the town.
Great. When you, when would you be available to start?
So I am under contract with the town of Cedar Edge. Um, my contract does say forty-five days unless mutually agreed upon. I think that my board would be agreeable to a shorter time, but not significantly shorter, at least thirty days.
Okay. And in closing, the town has contacted your references and conducted a background check. Is there anything you'd like to make the board aware of?
No. Yeah. Hopefully, it all comes out.
Hey, trustees, do you have any follow-up questions?
At Cedar Edge, how often are board meetings?
We have our uh we just do once monthly regular meetings. We usually do. Our current board really loves work sessions, so we've been doing three work sessions usually a month, um but just one regular meeting a month.
Okay.
Are the work sessions public or?
They are public.
Yeah. So just, oh, sorry, go ahead, Donnie.
How well do you understand water rights?
I do have a pretty good understanding of water rights. Um, we are um our district uh in the state, we're District Forty and in Division Four, is is incredibly complicated. Um, and everyone who works for the state will say that it's one of the more complicated um systems in the state and have been able to uh get a firm understanding of water rights um and 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 the town's water rights specifically. Uh, I would not call myself an expert. That's why we have a water attorney to work through the the really detailed questions. But as far as general understanding, I can sit in the room with the water attorney and understand what they're saying, so definitely.
Um, so is it true that Delta County doesn't have building regulations?
The county does not. The town does. Um, so the town, we have, uh, we've adopted twenty eighteen codes. Um, but the county does not. They don't have any building codes.
Is there, so you you operate your own building department then?
We do.
Yep. Was there, when, is that recent or is that been a long time thing for Cedar Edge or?
The town has always operated a part-time building department since I've been there, and I think um for quite a while before that. We do work, that's another um piece that we work collaboratively with some of our neighboring municipalities that we share. Um, uh, we 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 employ the same person, so everyone kind of, everyone employs them individually. Uh, it's it's only part-time work, so um they wouldn't uh he only worked sixteen hours a week, so he wouldn't uh qualify for benefits from either community. But uh we do share the same a building inspector.
He does the plan, plan reviews and everything, then?
He does plan review and inspections, correct.
And what role did you have in the fiber effort to the effort to get fiber to the different communities? We're we're um in Grand County, we've Mountain Parks Electric, our utility has been looking at that for quite some time, but.
So me personally had a had a really limited role, just um mostly showing up to some uh to meetings and conversations. Uh, the town of Cedar Edge uh had a a more direct role. So it was um I was with our local EDC and then Region Ten, which is uh similar to Northwest Cog, our 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 Council of Governments, um and then working with our um Rural Electric Association. So it was a conversation that um the uh Region Ten, our local cog, was gonna move forward with the county, with um individual municipalities to build out uh what they called carrier neutral locations so that uh we would bring a fiber hub to the town of Cedar Edge, and then private, private businesses could tap into that and then do that last mile. So we were gonna build out the middle mile. They were gonna build out the last mile. Uh, towards the end of those conversations, when DMEA decided that this was a good uh financial decision, a good um business decision for them. So they created a wholly owned subsidiary uh for fiber, so they started building out that last mile throughout the county. Well, both counties, I guess, Montrose and Mesa or uh Delta and Montrose, excuse me.
And you described some issues with, or some challenges with your development regulations. Were there, uh, was there an effort underway? Did you initiate an effort at all at the board to revise those or?
Yeah, we are rewriting our full land development code right now. So we're in the process. We are using our contract planner um to help us through that. His uh um his private business or or his business does that regularly. They update comp plans, rewrite code um all over the western slope, so uh they're doing that for us.
Thank you.
Uh, having having been a new governor manager, flipping was important to me was having sort of a Rolodex to people to call mentors or whatever. Do you, do you have people that you, you know, hey, I got this new thing I have confronted? Do you have some people that you sort of mentioned who you go to? And then the same for communities also, like other communities that you look to, like, I wanna know how they're doing that.
Yeah, so I would say I have um in my time in Cedar Edge have have worked really hard to develop those types of relationships because it's easy to get stuck um and isolated as as any manager, regardless of age. Um, and to uh not have anyone give you a little bit extra uh, you know, not involved um uh assessment of of the issue or the situation. So um have worked to have developed a pretty decent uh network of Western Slope that prior to COVID, we did a really good job of getting together regularly. Uh, haven't done that as much recently. Um, and then have also relied on our uh DOLA regional managers pretty heavily. So um as far as my local network, I uh lean on um Elise Castleberry, Ackerman Castleberry, who's the city manager in Delta, uh who pri- previously was the DOLA regional manager. Um, have a great relationship with her, um and that has been really helpful, having someone within the county to lean on. Um, but beyond the county, uh, there are definitely uh people that I'll give a call to um have a lot of respect for Bill Bell down in Montrose, and I'll give him a call, and he's always willing to have a conversation um uh with me if there's any issues or challenges um that arise. And um both of them have worked in in s- small and really, really small towns. Uh, Elise was uh one of the many Silverton um uh managers back in the day. So um she's got great experience, and so does Bill. Um, so yeah, that's that's really important.
Any other trustee?
Rest of the population of Cedar Edge?
We're twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred, okay.
Good. Okay, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, what um what would the board's priorities be over the next, the first sixty, ninety days uh with the new manager?
We have um a few issues. One be one being a conservation easement that we need to take care of. Some development issues. What else do we got? Yeah, well, that's not gonna be solved.
We have a highway that's completely overloaded and and a C dot plan for which, which we isn't really very well-known around the community, and we've got tremendous challenges with the with the highway out here, so it's at capacity, basically. Kind of indicative of we're growing like crazy, like you observed, and we're trying to get a, we're, I think we've got a pretty good handle on it, but that's a challenge to to keep a hold of the buck and bronco here, so.
Yeah. Is C dot's plans to expand the highway or they just know that it's a?
We have a narrow right-of-way through the middle of town, and um then there are plans to expand it with none of our, none of our intersections line up because the highway was retrofitted into the town. So um it's it's a real challenge.
Yeah. Yeah, working with C dot can be a challenge. When they came and redid the, they realigned the highway through town in the fifties and never acquired all of the right-of-way, so most property owners still own to the middle of the highway, um which, of course, if you've ever worked with C dot, you need to own the right-of-way before C dot will approve any uh any permitting or any uh utility or or construction permits. Well, they feel like it's not their responsibility to acquire any right-of-way, so they've told the town, the town needs to acquire the right-of-way, so we've, we go back and forth with C dot quite a bit. And my my dad is a retired C dot engineer, full disclosure, so. So I've worked.
Great. Okay, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, public, we are getting ready to go into an executive. We're getting ready to go into three executive, one at a time. We will exit each one appropriately and then enter the next. But um so we will give you a five-minute timer when we expect to be back, so. And I need a motion to go in to executive session.
You got one?
I move to uh move into an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four six four oh two four E um to include Town Manager Wesley LaBanche.
And Michael is in this one.
And Michael and and our attorney. And John.
I'll second.
John.
Oh, and John, yeah. Okay, did you get, say, and John?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
So I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
opposed? We are live. Okay, welcome back, everybody, and um welcome those who just joined us. We are now at discussion and possible action regarding the incentive agreement extension for Market Street Building Updates.
Uh, Mayor and Board, um pursuant to your direction nearly a month ago in Resolution twenty twenty-one oh four oh nine regarding incentive agreement, um staff has worked uh with the building department. Um, we have uh building permits that are um from our end, complete and ready to be picked up um in reference to the incentive agreement, a revised incentive agreement. Pursuant to your direction as well, uh, an offer was made to Mr. Limpkin on that matter. Um, uh, we sent that over, and we have received a rejection from him on that matter as it pertains particularly to the surety uh issue. Um, Resolution twenty twenty-one oh four oh nine is set to expire on Friday, and at such time uh per the um resolution, uh, town will take next steps on uh enforcement on that. That's all I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. Okay, we are now at an open forum, so if anybody from the public um would like to speak, now's your time, and you can raise your hand digitally. And everybody gets, you'll get three minutes. You get one, one try, one shot at this, and um, yep, so if you would like to make public comment to the board, now's your time. And for those attending, you should be able to click on the more option and have a raise hand feature that you can click on if you would like to provide a public comment. Okay, let's move on. Let's um with the state um doing away with the mask mandate, um, we felt like we should have that discussion tonight. And.
Uh, so yeah, uh, Mayor, um, and Board of Trustees, uh, you passed a resolution some while back, um, or I'm sorry, ordinance number four seven nine, series twenty twenty, um, section eleven, there's a repeal provision that says this ordinance shall shall be automatically repealed at such time as the town board of the town of Frazier declares that the COVID-nineteen public health emergency within the town has passed. As you know, the state's taken um uh a uh a new position just in the uh in recent weeks or the recent week or so, and the county's followed that. There is no longer now a mask requirement. There's mask recommendations, um unless you're um one of the excluded areas, prisons, schools, um those kinds of things. But notwithstanding that, um, the state has moved to a a place of of recommendations uh based on certain uh certain criteria, but there is no longer a mask requirement. So right now, you do have a mask requirement in town. So you are allowed to be more restrictive, but you obviously cannot be less restricted than the state. So if you repeal this tonight, um, then in in effect, what you do is you follow either the county and or the state's guidelines on that.
County or the state? Both of them.
As town attorney, I would just note that typically when you have an ordinance, the only way to repeal it is through another ordinance of equal um magnitude, if you will. But as Wes has indicated, there is a provision in the existing ordinance that says it will be automatically repealed if you determine that the COVID-nineteen pandemic has. it will be automatically repealed if you determine that the COVID-19 pandemic has, what was the wording? That the COVID-19 public health emergency within the town has passed. So under that provision, I think the board could adopt a resolution by motion if you wish, rather than having an ordinance come back to repeal the prior one.
Can I make a quick comment? I want my younger son to get his vaccine. And I would like everybody in town to get their vaccination. I think largely this has passed, but the only way we can depend on it passing is by getting vaccinated. So I'm, I'm really glad that I've been supportive, even with the mask ordinance tonight and also letting local businesses understand they can be more restrictive. They can certainly put up signs and require people to come in en masse. And I will certainly abide by that and hope everybody else will, but mainly get vaccinated.
What does the motion need to say?
Just I make a motion to have the.
In accordance with ordinance, whatever the number is.
Section 11 of the, where is the ordinance? Town ordinance number 479, Series 2020, Section 11, repeal. The ordinance shall be automatically repealed at such time as the town board. Frazier declares the COVID-19 public health emergency within the town has passed. I would motion that it has passed and as the state mandated, we don't have to wear masks. It's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's, there's three people that have. Do they have access to?
They can, they can talk. They just, they can get.
Oh, okay. There's three people that have just phone numbers that obviously can't digitally raise their hand like we asked either. So those three, we're gonna unmute you one by one and then ask if you have a public comment, just to be fair to everybody. Okay, last four, 8158, would you like to make a public comment? I believe I just unmuted you. 8158. I hope this works. 2630. 2630. And 9002. 9002. They may not be able to talk. Okay. We did everything we possibly could, so. And then there, you put them back into the mute panel, right? Okay, okay. Next is updates and Andy has a property tax assessment question in 30 seconds.
So many people in town may have noticed like I did that our property valuation went up dramatically. My house went from $200,000 to $400,000. So the process is complicated. It doesn't mean that my taxes are gonna double, but it does mean that our taxes could go up dramatically if our tax, if our, for instance, if Grand Lake taxes didn't go up as much as Frazier taxes did, or valuations, I'm sorry. Then the East Grand School District would be collecting more of their dollars off of our valuations. I did talk to our assessor, Tom Whiterd about this. I didn't really get back much of an answer other than, than he did say that he's looking at areas for valuation. So the deadline for protest is June 1st. I would, would encourage everybody always to look at your, your property valuation card. It's pretty easy to get ahold of with the county. It's likely a fairer assessment because of the, every property is a re- reappraised every two, every two years. This reflects the tremendous rise in property values. But I am gonna go ahead and protest my taxes so that it can go on beyond the June 1st deadline and I can look a little harder at the, at these area factors that may have been applied to make sure they're fair across, across the county.
When you talked to him, did he mention why he's using today's evaluations instead of 18 months ago? Because when the taxes go the other way, they use 18 months ago.
Okay, that'd be, so is that a question should be asked?
It's a question that should be asked.
Okay, I'll work with you a little bit on that. But I'll get the deadline next year. All you have to do is file a protest by June 1st and you've got quite a bit of time to work on it. So, so I'll make sure I get a protest in by that date. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.